Good afternoon. I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Newport News School Board for Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. On behalf of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an unprecedented effect on all of us. We are all adapting to this temporary new way of life, and the school board is as well. We're implementing new procedures for our meetings. This afternoon, we are holding an electronic meeting to transact the business of the school board. In doing so, we are participating in social distancing in cooperation with the governor's orders. We are taking these steps to ensure that the health and well-being of our staff, students, and the public. We would prefer to conduct our meetings face-to-face with an audience, but like so many of you, we understand the importance of doing all we can to stay safe. This afternoon, I am in the school administration building auditorium, and I am joined by the superintendent, the deputy city attorney, the school board clerk, and three staff members. School board members are connected virtually. Some are in the room with me as well, and the public will be able to see and hear them as we review and discuss school division business. We are committed to conducting our meetings in an open manner, and we will make every effort to ensure public input. We value and appreciate your partnership. So we're gonna get started with our agenda. First, we want to open up with the pledge. And Mr. Harris, would you please help us in the reciting of the pledge?
Everyone stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And now that will bring us to item number two, which on our agenda, which we do have an action before us this evening, where we're going to discuss our return to learn plan. And I believe that Dr. Parker wants to give us a brief synopsis of his recommendation on returning to learn for the fall. So please, Dr. Parker, take it away.
It's always good to turn your mic on first. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Searls Law, members of the board, and our community at large who are viewing in this evening. Sir, this evening, we'll start with a short presentation on the survey results, as well as some information from our operational team, operations team regarding our return to learn planning. We are asking that the board consider our recommendation this evening, and that's included in the presentation. So I will, I want to start by having our Dr. Gerald come forward and go over the survey results. I will get then use those results and speak to our recommendation. And then we will talk about our instructional technology and safety plans moving forward. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gerald for the first portion of this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good afternoon. Well, good afternoon, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, school board members, and Dr. Parker. First, I would like to take the opportunity to thank the data analytics team, Joe Ellis, Danielle Ross, and Lisa Coon for their diligent work behind the scenes to ensure that you have the information you need to make informed decisions regarding our next steps. Our return to learn survey was distributed electronically via our Newport News Public Schools website and via email on Wednesday, July 22nd. To encourage participation during the seven-day survey window, our community relations team sent reminders via email, phone blasts, and social media in an effort to gather as much feedback from our families as possible. The quantitative data analysis has been completed and will be presented today. With over 6,000 comments from our parents and staff, the data analytics team is hard at work reading and coding each comment to ensure all concerns are addressed in our plans as we move forward. As you can see, the 6,681 parents and guardians responded to our survey. Each icon represents one percentage point, and the data has been presented by school level. Pre-K elementary respondents make up forty percent, forty-six, pre-K elementary respondents make up forty-six percent of the sample, while secondary parents and guardians represent fifty-four percent of the survey respondents. Two thousand six hundred and thirty-two staff members provided input and feedback, and you were able to review the responses represented by work location. Though several of our staff members have served our students at multiple locations, staff members were asked to choose the option that best describes their assigned work location. For example, Point Option, under the leadership of Chris Smith, exclusively services high school students. The staff from Point Option is represented in the high school responses. An ESL teacher who serves our multi-language learners may have selected three work locations. This teacher's response is counted once in the overall division level data, but reported out individually at each school level report. Staff members who wrote in responses such as bus drivers who provide special transportation, interpreters, school psychologists, make up the three percent represented in the other category. As we begin to review our survey responses, please take a moment to review the three proposed learning options shared during the July 20th presentation. Note that no matter the option provided this evening, no matter the option approved this evening, all families will have the opportunity to select 100% online instruction for the first full semester of the 2020-2021 school year. Guardians and staff members were asked to make a selection based on the statement, "I would prefer that all students return in the fall under the option below." As you can see, more than 50% of guardians and 75% of staff indicate that they would prefer all students return under the 100% virtual learning for first marking period option. This is a shift in responses from our initial input survey, which indicated over 70% of students, guardians, and staff preferred a hybrid model. Keep in mind that our original input survey was designed to gather data to inform decisions, and there were only two options provided. This information was used to develop our three options for the July meeting. As I shared previously, no matter what learning option is adopted by Newport News Public Schools, families will still have the opportunity for 100% virtual. The data represented represents parent responses to the statement, "After reviewing the proposed NMPS return to learning plan, if provided the opportunity, I would consider enrolling my student in virtual instruction for the first semester of the school year, September 8th through January 27th." Eighty-one percent of families indicated they would consider 100% virtual-based instruction based on the information provided. Guardians and staff were asked to select their three greatest concerns. As you can see, health and safety, teaching and learning, and social emotional support for our students were consistent as the top three concerns. Over 90% of families and staff indicate health and safety as their top concern. Sixty percent of staff and 79% of guardians indicate teaching and learning is their second greatest concern, and over 50% of staff and guardians identified social and emotional support as their third concern. Eighty-nine percent of guardians agree that students will have access to the technology they need to participate in learning in the fall. Guardians were asked to rate their confidence in NMPS supporting at-home learning, while staff members were asked to rate their confidence in providing online instruction. Guardians rated Newport News a 3.5 stars, gave Newport News Public Schools a 3.5-star rating when rating support at-home learning, and staff rated their confidence in providing virtual instruction with four thumbs up. Our curriculum, school, and professional learning leadership teams have been, have been, and continue to be committed to ensuring our instructional staff is ready for the fall. Thank you to all of you for what you're doing to keep our teachers confident. Staff members' confidence in maintaining health and safety strategies outlined in the proposed learning plan, return to learn plan, rated themselves as a 2.3 out of five, which is consistent with the health and safety being the top concern of our staff and families. In the survey, parents were asked a separate question to identify the importance of student social emotional support in virtual learning environment. Eighty-five percent of parents and guardians selected that this is very important for their families. Staff were asked to identify the importance of staff social emotional support during virtual learning. Eighty-six percent of staff members selected adult social emotional learning is very important for virtual learning. Regardless of the option adopted, we understand that childcare can be an issue for families and staff. Guardians indicate that option two, grades four through 12, receiving 100% virtual from home, is the least challenging for finding childcare, while staff indicate option one, 100% virtual for the first marking period, poses the least challenge in finding childcare. Finally, when parents were asked to indicate their preferred mode of transportation for the 2020-2021 school year based on the planned, proposed plan provided, 21% of families indicate they would prefer Newport News Public School provide transportation for their students. I would like to take the opportunity to say thank you to all the guardian and staff members who took time out of their schedules to complete our second return to learn survey. I will be available for questions from the board at the end of the presentation, and then happy to now turn the presentation back over to our superintendent, Dr. George Parker III.
Well, I'd like to thank Dr. Gerald for a concise report on the survey data that was administered on the recent survey. As a reminder to our staff, our teachers out there, our staff, there was an intent form that was submitted through Human Resources, which is also a data collection piece, but it is not to inform the recommendation this evening. What that data piece is collected for is to make future workforce decisions that will determine which staff may need some accommodation is required to, due to either their own personal health concerns or considerations of those in their household, as well as childcare and other factors. So we encourage you to continue to complete that Human Resources staff intent form. That is an important piece of the work moving forward, but it will not be used as information to inform our decision this evening. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, in making the recommendation this evening, I wanted to take into account and share some of the other data points that were used. We obviously held a Facebook Live session, and those comments from our community were collected and reviewed, and we have also disaggregated our staff into certain committees to look at safety, childcare, social emotional learning instruction, technology, and to continue to engage with the questions that we've received from our constituents as well as the board in terms of how and what instruction will look like moving forward. But the most driving motivation for this decision this evening is our current status with the COVID-19 crisis, which we continue to, as a community and as a region, continue to wrestle with in terms of how can we ensure that the safety of our staff and our students in an environment that would require some level of close proximity at some point, and also daily use. So with that being said, we still feel that we need metrics in order to really be able to wrestle with the safety protocols that we have in place and ensure that they're going to be effective, to make sure that we are not having a heightened level of risk, putting our stakeholders in a heightened level of risk under these conditions. We will continue to work with the Health Department and the state, the Virginia Department of Education, to continue to look at not only mitigation strategies and recent, recent health-related advice, but we will also look at the trend of COVID-19 in our region, and in particular in our city, to determine when we are seeing that this turned, this shift in the number of cases, number of deaths in our immediate area. So with that being said, I'll move on to the recommendation, my recommendation to the board for consideration based on the survey and the other relevant data that we've collected. The recommendation from my office is to choose the 100% virtual option for the first marking period of this school year, and all students will receive 100% virtual instruction for the first nine weeks, which would be September through November 2nd, before considering a return plan that would allow students to physically report to school. I do add the caveat that we would work on metrics to determine what those, what that is, how that decision would be made and how that recommendation would be made to the board. We're working right now with our local community and the Virginia Health Department to start looking at specific COVID-19-related metrics that would be able, that would allow us to be able to identify when our safety procedures would be at their highest level of impact, and we would receive the greatest level of confidence from our staff and from our parents in terms of offering face-to-face instruction. So we will continue to work with those entities to develop those metrics that will help us make an informed decision prior to the end of the first marking period. With that being said, this is the recommendation that we have on the table, and we will talk a little bit about what it would look like from a virtual standpoint with the following presenters. Now I'll turn it over first to Dr. Jones to talk about, to speak to instruction, and then our following presenters will be on technology and safety. Thank you.
Good evening. As we transition to review the learning plan, I would first like to thank all of the teachers, administrators, supervisors, and staff for the hard work provided during the closure of school in March. However, as we plan for teaching and learning for the fall return, it will look differently from the spring semester, and staff will be prepared to provide engaging virtual learning experiences for all students to the greatest extent possible. First, teachers are continuing to engage in professional development that supports a blended learning environment. Supervisors, specialists, and lead teachers have revised their curriculum to include standards that had not been taught or mastered during the spring semester. All students will have a device for learning. All students will use the Canvas Learning Management System to manage their work. There will be teacher-led and live instruction, four days a week. There will be recorded lessons and video integration activities. Attendance will be taken daily, and feedback, grading, and assessments will be incorporated into the process. Our virtual learning model includes four days of live, teacher-led instruction as well as independent learning. During independent learning, teachers may engage students in small group instruction. Lessons will be recorded to provide students with opportunities to go back and review learning or engage in learning at another time. During the one day of independent learning, students will, may engage in computer-based programs, projects, or work to complete assignments on their own. Students who need additional support in learning may engage in small group instruction with the teacher. Lessons will be engaging and provide students with voice and choice in learning activities. This is a snapshot of what a week may look like on the virtual schedule. There are four days of at-home virtual learning, and on Wednesdays, teachers will pull small groups of students. They will also hold office hours, participate in staff meetings, and teacher professional development. So generally, on a Wednesday, students will be working independently unless they are engaging in small group instruction for identified populations. This is an example of a pre-K virtual learning schedule. As you can see, the day begins with a morning meeting to allow students to greet one another, build community, and set the stage for learning. If you note the Zoom symbol, there will be opportunities for students to have live, teacher-led instruction throughout the day. The remaining minutes are for developmentally appropriate, appropriate independent activities. This time also allows for brain breaks, snack time, and just an opportunity for students to have some movement. You will notice that there are similarities with the pre-K and kindergarten schedule. The day begins also with morning meetings to allow students to get acclimated to the learning process. At the beginning of the day, time has also been allotted for interventions and also enrichment for our gifted students. Live, teacher-led instructional time for an elementary student would be from kindergarten and first grade, about 1.5 hours; grades two to three, two hours; and grades four and five will engage in two and a half hours of live instruction. Related arts will also be included, health and PE, for about 30 minutes daily. All elementary schedules will be posted at the end of this week. Shown now is a sample virtual middle school schedule. As you can see, the live Zoom symbols noted by the camera indicates, indicates the time that students will be engaged in learning. Students will participate in four core classes and have at least two elective classes or participate in intervention during one of those times. We do want to support students who need additional support in learning through one of the related arts periods for additional instruction. The high school schedule will continue with an A-B alternating day schedule, providing opportunities for students to engage in a full virtual schedule. In our magnet and advanced classes that generally incorporate hands-on learning, teachers will plan to include virtual simulations, virtual field trips, and labs. Many of our AP and IB teachers have participated in professional development this summer and have learned alternative methods to assist students in learning. Two schools have been added to our NEMZC cohort, Mitchville and Woodside, which will help in promoting college readiness. Dual enrollment with Thomas Nelson Community College will continue to take place, and our community captains cohort one students that weren't supposed to take Math 125 in the fall will be taking it in the spring on campus. In a blended learning environment, students will be engaged with their teachers and peers. So in summary, teachers will have daily well-planned lessons in Canvas. The secondary learning plan uses the five E model, in which we engage, explain, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate with students daily. The elementary model has a similar one in which they use getting started, learn something new, working on it, and show what you know. At all levels, we are confident in that teachers will provide quality live instruction and interact with students a minimum of four days each week. Students will engage in independent work to include practice on computer-based programs such as Dreambox, Smarty Ants, iExcel, and No Red Ink at the secondary levels. Teachers will provide students with feedback and grades. Teachers will also have small group instruction for all students at the elementary levels and for identified students at the secondary levels. Teachers will also engage students in enrichment, and learning will be differentiated for our TAG, AP, and IB programs. Secondary students will continue to have opportunities for dual enrollment courses as well as take high school classes through Virtual Virginia. Teachers will take daily attendance. However, lessons will be recorded if students have a special circumstance that prohibits them from engaging and live learning at the time of instruction. In this case, attendance will be calculated based upon login time and work submitted in camp. At this time, I am going to turn it over to Christopher Jenkins, who will talk about technology.
And I think, Chris, I think Dr. Mitchell is on deck next, and she'll turn it over to you after her slides.
My apologies.
Good afternoon, school board member, school board chairman, Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, and board members. This afternoon, I will provide the board with information pertaining to some key areas of the learning plan to include special education, attendance, McKinney-Vento, and social emotional learning in preparation for the return to learn plan for school this fall. I will begin this portion of the presentation with a focus on special education. I would like to first start out by thanking our special education teachers who taught in a virtual face-to-face summer program for students with disabilities. Each student had a computer, and the teachers taught every day face-to-face. Additionally, I'd like to thank the teachers who taught in a in-person special education summer school program, where the students did attend school at Killeen Creek, and the teachers were there to teach them Monday through Thursday. The supervisors helped to plan the program, and the programs, both programs met with success for students. The teachers did an outstanding job, and we just would like to thank them for their hard work. Students with an IEP, otherwise known as individual education program, will continue to receive services based on their individual needs. Keeping in mind that we serve students in 12 different disability categories, so student plans will vary regarding types of support. Their instruction will be based on the student's individualized education plan, which their parent has input in, in order to provide students with equitable access to their instruction. These services will be provided virtually and will continue for the first nine weeks, and will include access to technology, access to specialized instruction, and access to the support of their assigned special education teacher. As I indicated earlier, students have different plans. So students who receive their services within the general education and resource setting will follow a schedule that is similar to their peers with alternative or additional instruction provided based on their IEP. They will continue to be supported through the collaborative model, affording students the benefit of the co-teacher. So if they are in a collaboration model, then that special education teacher will, in fact, be online at the same time in the classroom virtually, supporting the student based on their individual needs. Students who receive services within the special education setting for the majority of the day, but also have some participation with their peers, will still have that opportunity to participate in the general education setting as outlined in their IEP. These services will also, students will also receive their related services. So for example, if a student receives speech therapy, our speech pathologists have now been trained to provide speech pathology virtually. So students will still be gaining access to their accommodations and the things that are written into their IEP. Students will receive collaborative and/or small group instruction from their special education teacher and service providers through the virtual platform, once again, based on individual student needs. I'd like to take a look at two sample schedules. Dr. Jones talked about schedules, so I want to look at two sample schedules. So on the left, you'll see the virtual schedule for students kindergarten through fifth grade, a sample. On the right, you see what it could potentially look like for a student with a disability, depending on their need. So during the intervention period, a student with a disability could have a daily check-in with a special education teacher, if that's what they need to help get them grounded for the day, or depending on the IEP, they may at that time have some academic support. And then you see during the morning meeting, the student would be in the morning meeting with the general education classroom. There are times that the special educator would be in there, depending on the student's IEP, but then we do have students who at that particular time would not need the support of their special educator. Looking at the literacy block, it, the student may require a specially-designed instructional program for reading, and if that's the case, the student would be pulled out at that particular time. So that's just a sample of a schedule, how it could look for a student with a disability who is gaining access to the general curriculum. Now I'd like to share with you a schedule for a student who is in a special education setting for the majority of the day. Once again, you see the middle school schedule on the left, and then on the right, you see what it could potentially look like for a student who's on the adaptive curriculum track. So the student may have a morning meeting, morning meeting. If appropriate, go out for related arts or CTE. This student in particular would have adaptive PE versus the general PE, because the adaptive PE is what would best meet their physical needs. And then for Core One, this student could be in a language arts class with the benefit of the co-teacher in the classroom. So that's just another example of how a student with a disability's schedule could look different, but that special education teacher would still be the teacher involved. Next, I'd like to move to another group of students that we are focusing on, and that is our students who meet what is called the McKinney-Vento Act. The McKinney-Vento Act ensures that school division staff provide support for students that meet the criteria for being homeless. And we try to be ahead of the curve. At the end of the year, we had 555 students meeting this criteria. So we created a plan to maintain contact with these students throughout the summer. So most of the students or their parents have access to a cell phone. So we had individuals who called them on a weekly basis. Sometimes they called them twice a week to check in to see what they needed. We also have a grant that provides resources for us to ensure. We also have a grant that provides resources for us to ensure that each one of those students had a hotspot that needed it. If they needed school supplies, if they needed supplies for basic needs as well as a care kit, we have a grant that provides the resources to allow our students to access it. And then the last thing is that we have staff that continue to provide referrals to Newport News staff. So for example, if one of the teachers or the attendance officers or social worker who was assigned to a particular student knew the student needed some support in mental health, they could provide that through our Newport News Mental Health clinicians. But also they would provide them with resources and contacts to outside agencies for additional support. Help parents to find housing, help parents to find clothing, et cetera. Next, I wanted to talk a little bit about attendance. As Dr. Jones mentioned, attendance will be taken every day. If we are in virtual school, it is the same as if you're sitting in a brick and mortar building in terms of attendance. Because we know attendance clearly is important. It continues to be important in any school environment in order to ensure that our students are college, career, and citizen-ready. So we will continue to track attendance. It will be taken daily, but it can be taken in multiple ways. So I've given you a little chart that shows some of the ways that the State Department will allow us to track attendance. So if a student is logging into the learning management system, then that shows that they are actually engaged and working, so that can count as attendance. Or for example, if they are engaged on a discussion board through Canvas, that can count as attendance for that particular class. If they have an email exchange with their teacher, particularly about their assignment, that can also count as attendance. We are continuing to look at other opportunities to ensure that all of our students are counted who are in class. As Dr. Jones spoke, that there is some flexibility. If a student can't be in class in the morning but uses a recorded lesson, we can count that as well as attendance. And rounding out my portion of the presentation, I will close by describing some of the components of our social emotional learning plan. Partly in response to the survey, but I am proud to say that we started a committee very early on to look at what we would do to help our students with social emotional learning. So our plan to support our students has three sections. One for teachers, one for students, and one for parents. And as you can see from the schedules that have the morning meeting and the schedules that have a dedicated time for social emotional learning, we have now the opportunity to do it on a daily basis and have in fact purchased a curriculum that we piloted last year in six of our schools. So we looked at the students in advance. We did an assessment. We implemented the program and we did a mid-year assessment and would have done an end-of-year assessment if we had been in school to see if in fact the student's social emotional learning had improved. We are proud to say that the discipline in those six classes went down because students were better able to discuss how they were feeling. Students had a better handle on how to interact with each other. So as you can see, we've incorporated dedicated time, resources, and professional development for support for all stakeholders. As you look at the family section, we have online resources for social emotional needs. We are providing parents with home-based activities to help with their students and then ongoing virtual and direct support from our social workers and psychologists. I just want to mention that in the SEL curriculum, it is Castle certified, which really is the premier organization that looks at what social emotional learning should look like. And the curriculum focuses on several different areas. Self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, social awareness, and relationship skills. And we know that in order to be a well-rounded individual, it's important for us to know how to navigate through those areas. We have webinars for staff on how to take care of themselves. We also have webinars for staff on how to support your students virtually through SEL. We will be doing professional development on the curriculum, school division-wide. We have an SEL champion at each school that will lead that effort. And right now, we have professional development happening for staff around SEL, and I am very pleased to say that there is virtual, thank goodness we're virtual, because if it were physical, there would be standing room only. So it is one of the big draws this summer. Teachers see the need for it and they are appreciative of the support they are receiving. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Jenkins, Director of Technology, and he's going to share how the Technology Department will support virtual learning.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good afternoon, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Sorel's Law, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. I've had the opportunity to speak with you recently about the tools like Chromebooks and resources like the Canvas Learning Management System that will allow the district to deliver engaging instruction in a blended or virtual learning environment. As you consider our possible virtual start for the first nine weeks of school this year, I'd like to give you a few details about the how we will deploy those tools and resources and the supports that we're putting in place to ensure success for our students, staff, and families. Before I jump in, I'd like to take a second to thank my team in the Technology Department. I feel very blessed to lead an amazing team of IT professionals, and they have worked tirelessly since our schools closed in March to keep our staff and students connected and engaged. At the same time, they've been feverishly developing and implementing a plan that will make virtual learning possible for all of our students on September eighth. Probably one of the most pressing questions I get is, when are the Chromebooks coming? So in order to make sure that our students are prepared to hit the ground running with virtual learning on the first day of school, we will begin issuing Chromebooks to secondary school students over the next two weeks. Members of the Technology Department have partnered with principals and other school administrators to develop a schedule and a communication plan for students and for families. Distribution for our high school students will take place on August tenth through thirteenth, and our schools will communicate with students and their families by phone and email to let them know which day and time that they'll be coming to pick up their devices. Chromebooks for middle school students will be distributed the following week, August seventeenth through twentieth. And again, our schools will communicate directly with families and provide specific details about scheduled pickup times, dates, and times. As I've mentioned previously, the new Chromebooks for elementary school students may not arrive until December. In the interim, we will make loaner devices available to families who don't already have a device in the home that can be, that students can use for virtual learning. As part of our intent form process that each family will be asked to complete, we'll gather information about the computer needs of individual elementary school students. Loaner devices will be distributed to elementary school students during the week of, I believe that's supposed to be the twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh, twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. I'll double check on that and get back to you. And last, but certainly not least, we're in the process of procuring iPads for our youngest learners, our pre-K students, and more information about that program will be available in the coming weeks. Understanding that students must connect before they can engage, we're in the final stages of launching our Connected at Home program, which will allow NPS families to request assistance in getting connected to the internet so their children can participate in virtual learning. Eligible families will receive a mobile Wi-Fi hotspot that includes an unlimited data plan and stringent content filtering to keep our students safe online. We will begin accepting applications for the program on August tenth through our website and over the phone. Additional details and instructions on how to apply will go out to families later this week. To provide a one-stop shop of sorts for technology support, we're launching a website specifically geared towards students and their families and the technology tools and resources that they're going to need in order to be successful at virtual learning. There's a section for students that will feature information about Chromebooks, the Canvas Learning Management System, and links and contact information to help them connect with technical support staff. There's a section for families that will include links to tutorials and videos that provide information about virtual learning and the Canvas Learning Management System, as well as information about how to apply for low and no-cost internet connectivity. And lastly, to make sure that our students, families, and staff can get the help they need, our Technology Department will staff a virtual learning and technical support call center from six AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, for the first nine weeks of school. In addition to technical support staff who will be able to help with everything from connectivity to hardware problems, we will have instructional technology coaches available to assist our teachers in the use of Canvas and other educational technology resources. I'd be happy to answer your questions at the end of the presentation, but for now, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Lou Rosso, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Support Services.
Thank you, Chris, and good afternoon, board members. As we prepare to bring our students back virtually, there are fewer operational issues, as you might imagine, than originally we had discussed with you, but there are still a couple of important things we want to talk to you about this afternoon. The first is meal service. Meal service is an important part of every school day for our students, and we've been planning to accommodate our students even while they're learning remotely, just as we've done since March, really. I want to give a big thanks to our child nutrition staff, our transportation staff, and our security staff that have made feeding our students possible while they've been out of school. As we move into the new school year, families may be able to pick up meals at any school, the closest school to where they live, no matter where their student attends school. We also will have some mobile sites. We know that transportation is an issue for some of our families. We received some of that feedback during Facebook Live. So we will continue to have some mobile feeding sites for our families as well. We will allow families to pick up multiple days' meals to reduce the number of visits they'll have to make to the school. And we're going to also have meal pickup times later in the day to accommodate family's schedules. We understand that with families working, sometimes being able to pick up in the middle of the day is not possible. So we're going to have a later pickup time for meal. In the area of childcare, we know, as Dr. Gerald pointed out earlier, that our survey data has said that both some of our parents as well as some of our staff will need childcare, even if we return virtually. And we've been working with the city's Department of Recreation to determine how we might be able to do that, both for before and after school, as well as all day, if that's what's needed. And we may also partner with some other community organizations on childcare. Once we determine the level of need, and as Dr. Parker mentioned, we have staff intent forms that are currently out. We expect to receive those by the end of this week, and that will help us assess the level of need, and then that will facilitate our further planning. We do know that we'll need to identify space in some of our schools that we could use for childcare. And we also believe that the city's going to need some help with staffing. So we have talked with them about the possibility of some of the Newport News Public School staff being able to assist with this if they don't need to do their contracted job duties when we return kids virtually. So there's still quite a bit to figure out in the area of childcare, but we are going to do our best to help parents and staff with their childcare needs as we return to learn. And lastly, something I know that's on everyone's mind, and Dr. Parker mentioned it in his preliminary remarks, what is going to have to happen before we can get students back into our school buildings and classrooms? The Virginia Department of Health is tracking the data that's shown on this slide by locality and region throughout the state. So this dashboard is on their website and it's available to us each and every day, and I'll tell you that some of us check it every day. Based on this data, each area of the state is determined to be at no risk, at low risk, at moderate risk, or at high risk of community transmission of COVID- nineteen. The level of risk determines what mitigation strategies schools need to take, as well as which activities could happen in person. We'll be working closely with the Health Department to track this data in our community so we can determine when it'll be safe for students and staff to return to our schools in a more normal fashion. So that's all for operations, and I want to turn it back over to Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosso. So, Mr. Chairman, what I would like to say is that what we are planning and proposing this evening is very different than the instructional program that our community and our staff experienced in the spring. As you can see, we are planning for, to equip our staff and our teachers and put them in a position to provide quality instruction for our students under these current circumstances. We feel that we can be successful in a virtual format, whether it be a limited period of school year or for a longer period. However, we would like to work on metrics to determine when it is safe to return our staff and our students back to full-time daily instruction. Our parents out there, we know that there are varying levels of difficulty that you will experience due to the decision that we're proposing this evening. With that being said, we want to continue to work with your families as best possible. As you've heard this evening, we have supports that we'll continue to deploy in areas of, whether it be social emotional, whether it be support for special needs students or ELL or English Language Learners, whether it be additional intervention opportunities or exploration opportunities, such as physical education, fine arts, or other things. We want to make sure that we're continuing to meet the needs of your child as best possible under these circumstances as well. We realize the difficulties of childcare. We're continuing to partner without external organizations, such as Parks and Rec. We'll continue to work, reach out to even further organizations in our community who are providing childcare to see if we can support their missions as well. We ask that everyone just understand that this will require some level of flexibility, not only in the home, but also in our approach to instruction moving forward. And we consider all stakeholders, all adults involved in this decision to be a partner in providing the quality of instruction, the quality of instruction that we need to provide to our students. So with that being said, Mrs. Rosso mentioned some of the metrics that will be, that we will start to determine in terms of our recommendations moving forward later in the year. And Mr. Chair, at this time, I would like to open up the floor to any questions that our board members may have, and again, reiterate our recommendation for a virtual start to the school year for all students. Mr. Chairman?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Let's open it up for questions, board members' questions. Okay, Ms. Amen.
I do have a question. And sort of looking at the trends and how things are going, I note that
You're on mute.
There we go. I note that our first survey was done at one point in time, our second, sort of as we peaked in another wave, and our finish of positive testing in the Peninsula Health District is very close to where it was today. It's very close to where it was when our first survey closed. And we had a bit different results in our survey. I think, and I guess I would ask maybe Dr. Parker to speak to this. The end of the first marking period is going to be as we get into October, November, you start seeing cold and flu season come up. From what I understand, healthcare providers presently can't necessarily clearly tell between, say, flu or COVID without a a positive test and the affirmative. As we start seeing ourselves, our area come down, are we going to miss possibly a sweet spot of getting some in-room, in-class education if we're not revisiting this until the end of the first marking period? And what is the thought it may be as things trend, revisiting this sometime during the first marking period?
All right. Having some microphone issues here. That's a very good question, Mrs. Amen. What I would indicate is that it takes a lot to get to mobilize, to get schools up and running in one format and then to switch to another format. I think we'll begin, we're working with the Virginia Health Department immediately to start to establish the metrics that we need to use to measure our product, the community's progress in terms of managing COVID- nineteen and when it will be safe to return. I believe giving these, the nine-week period to determine not only whether it is safe, but also how we will return. And then to put the logistics in place to return, will take all of that time. I don't believe it'll be something that we'll be able to switch, flick, switch the flip, flick the switch on to happen immediately. We will have to work out the logistics. And that information we're collecting, we're going to collect from parents during that registration process, will determine, you know, not only whether students will be able to choose, what families will choose to stay out for the entire semester and work virtually for the full semester, but we need to work out bus transportation, family schedules, and everything else if we move back to a hybrid model on how those students will return back to classes and how we will seamlessly maintain the integrity of instruction during that transition. So I do believe that we continue to plan for a phased-in return to school as we get the school year started. Don't wait till the end of the nine weeks. Start planning it. It will take several weeks for our teams to really work out the scheduling and the transportation and all of the other complex. and all of the other complexities that are associated with that, with that transition. And we will, we will start that immediately, once we're, once we're up and running in a virtual format, to make sure that that's possible at the point when we feel it's safe to do so.
Oh, yes, Ms. Sorel's Law.
There we go. Um, so just a comment to start. Childcare, so this is progressive for our district. I am, this is probably one of the things I am most excited to see that we're able to respond to the needs of the community, to even just attempt to explore it. Because so many districts across the nation are not able to help with that cry that parents, and it's a very valid concern for parents, having to deal with virtual. So I thank you in advance for any work that we're able to do in that, in that department. And then I have two questions, one for Dr. Gerald. There seems to have been some concern that option two changed from the July special meeting to the survey. And so we were just wanting a little clarification on that.
Thank you. That's a great question, Ms. Vice Chair Sorel's Law. One of the things in the survey development, we wanted to ensure that we provided a very clear second option. The second option that was initially presented in the board presentation was reviewed to ensure that it was clear and concise. And when families were making that selection, staff were making that selection, there was no room for error. So that's why it was changed to the bold font at the top, clearly stating 100% virtual for grades four through 12, and adding in the layer of pre-K three, and also adding in the layer of special populations. In addition, the hyperlinks were placed in. So the initial presentation, once we sat down, and if we wanted to ensure we had a survey response that was reliable, and there was no room for, so we just wanted to make sure that language was very clear, so they didn't leave a lot of room for questions about what option two actually was.
Okay, thank you so much for that, for the clarity and for the explanation.
No problem at all.
Let's see, and my other question is a general one, I'm not sure who to direct this to, but school supply lists, can we get a feel for when those might be available so parents can start planning and purchasing?
I'll respond, we are, we are finalizing that, that supply list. We are aware that this weekend, I think, is a tax-free
It is.
Weekend, so that list will come out. It will come out before Friday, so our parents can go out and get, and start shopping and take advantage of the tax-free weekend. I would expect that to be finalized shortly, and it'll be available on the website. We'll also send it out so, on social media and other outlets.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sorel. Mr. Ely, I believe you have a hand, a question.
Good evening, everybody. Pretty, now, pretty much a question, pretty much a statement. I just want to address the Newport News community, and I'd like to recognize the resilience during these unprecedented times that we are in. We have witnessed, or may he even experience, how COVID-19 has exposed gaps in our society. This pandemic has forever changed what we consider normal life with tremendous impacts on the life of students nationwide. We sent our students home uncertain about the future and created plans day by day with hopes that we would return to school. And today, I just want to acknowledge the parents that became teachers, the teachers who not only worried about their own children, but also the well-being of the students of Newport News, and to the community members for doing your part to help us slow down this virus. I have heard from each and every one of you, and I just want you to know, it's been, it's been hard. Our teachers becoming instant, our parents becoming instant teachers. And I know parents, it's possible that your math skills were really tested, and it was very hard. And I know some of y'all say, am I really smarter than a fifth grader? But I'm proud to say that regardless of your math skills, we all worked together last spring for our children. And we will continue to do what's best for them in the fall. And for the first nine weeks, the superintendent is suggesting distance learning, and I think that will be our life and our effort to protect Newport News community. We know that if our children were to contact, come in contact with this virus, it could mean life or death, but not just for the students, it could mean it for the family members. And I just, we cannot risk our community just to say we had a little experience of what life used to be like. And as we all try to navigate life, I would like to close with a quote from Frederick Douglass. He said, "I prepare to be true to myself, even at the hazard of incurring the radical of others, rather than to be false and to incur my own abhorrence." And I also like to say, I can only stand for what's right for Newport News because the teachers matter, the bus drivers matters, the maintenance crew matters, food and service matters, and the staff of Newport News matters. So I would just like to thank the community and thank everybody for all working together. And we will get through this and doing this unprecedented terms. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ely. Dr. Best?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kind of question, comment, I just want to just reiterate, because I receive this question a lot regarding, from parents regarding what are they to do if they work during the day when students are in the live instruction with their teacher? And so the question was answered, and I just want to make sure I'm correct, that there will be recordings that parents will have access to, so that they can get the same lessons, so that their children can get the same lessons as their classmates. That's correct, Dr. Jones? All right, and then?
That is correct, Dr. Best. I just want to make sure parents are aware. Our teachers will be given, will be given instructions on how to accommodate circumstances that may warrant some consideration for, for an out-of, for, for out-of-hour teaching. So if the class is offered in the morning, but that student may not have access to instruction till later that evening, due to some parents' family circumstances. The learning management system we're working with allows for recordings. Our attendance procedures allow for other alternative ways to, to count a student present, whether, whether it's product-based or actual time spent physically. I do believe there's always something lost when a student's not meeting synchronously with the teacher, because they don't have the opportunity to ask questions and engage with their other classmates. However, we understand that there may be some circumstances where a student may not, where that parent may be needed to, to facilitate that student's learning, and they may not be available till outside of the hours of that class. So the learning management system we have will allow us to do that. We'll have to work with our teachers to better prepare, to meet the unique needs of, of students and their families during this time.
Thank you, Dr. Parker, and also parents that are out there listening. And if this is applicable to you, please make sure that you reach out to those teachers and let them know your extenuating circumstances. So, and, and with our fantastic teachers, I'm sure that they will work to make accommodations so that your child can be successful as well. I have a question for Mr. Jenkins regarding parents and parents training on the learning platforms. So will we be rolling out something, provide some opportunities with varied schedules so that parents can become more familiar with what their children will be working with?
Absolutely, Dr. Best. On our website, there, there will be a section dedicated to families, and we're working on building out the content. But the Canvas Learning Management System team, implementation team, has put together some tutorials and videos for our parents on how they can use the system, how they can help their students use the system, and also how they can use, log into the system and, and view the work that their students have been doing. Well, also, that call center also will be available for families to call in. We're going to publish one single phone number for all technical support related to any kind of technology problem or access to the Canvas Learning Management System. So they'll be able to speak Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. They'll be able to call and speak to a live person and get questions answered, or get, if they don't understand something that's on the website, or if they don't have access to the website, they'll be able to speak to somebody who can, who can put them in touch with the resources. So I think, I think we have a good plan in place, and we will certainly grow and adapt as we hear from our families this fall.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, and just one more comment. And just as I stated, we need parents to reach out to teachers if their children have extenuating circumstances. We're going to be needing the help of the community to do this and to do this successfully. So I am encouraging churches, social civic organizations, have meetings, have pods, have get-togethers, and get, gather a group of parents, get them together, and help them to navigate these challenges to be able to better assist their students. And we will be calling on you for your help, but there are some things that we can do that can help our students to be more successful as a communities, and we need the village. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Best. And I do see that there is one more question, but we're going to have some more opportunity to ask questions because we are, we have this as an action item. So why don't we, I've got two operational questions myself, but why don't we go ahead and see if there's a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation, then we can have further debate or, or questions at that time. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation with the upcoming school year.
Is there a second?
I second that question.
All right. The motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for 100% virtual learning has been offered by Mr. Harris and seconded by Dr. Best. All right, so now time for a discussion, and I believe, Mr. Ely, you had an additional question?
Just a quick question. I know our food nutrition is very creative with providing food to our kids during this time. Is it, do you think it's possible that the food can be delivered to the kids, bus stops for breakfast and lunch? Is that something, or what do we have in my forest lunch being provided for the kids during this time in breakfast?
The plan right now, Mr. Ely, is that we would deliver, or we would have food picked up, available to pick up at we for breakfast and lunch for multiple days. And so parents wouldn't have to come as often, and the food would be available to the, to the children at home. So for example, if they came Monday, they might get food for Tuesday, Wednesday, maybe even Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, something like that. So we're looking to minimize the number of times kids would have to have, or parents would have to do a pickup. I, I'm not really sure that we'll be able to do the delivery to bus stops. I think logistics of that are, are challenging. And then there's some food safety issues as well. So I know in some rural districts, I think, over the spring and summer, that happened. But I, I don't know that that's happened in any city our size. I just not, and I think it's because of the logistics. But anyway, we can certainly look at it. We're trying to make it easy for families to get meals for kids. We want kids to be fed.
Thank you so much, and maybe some of the churches can partner, and I don't know if they could be on possible sites. I just know some of the residents in the East End community, what to my attention was kind of hard. A lot of them don't have transportation, and some of the routes, I mean, some of the location was off the bus route. So they were just making a scene. It was that possible. So I just keep them and let them know that lunch and breakfast will be provided, and maybe they won't have to come to pick it up as often. Thank you so much.
And we will also, I mean, if there are some particular sites that are better than the sites we've been using for mobile feeding, if we could get that information, we can certainly change the mobile feeding sites. I mean, we have buses going wherever it is, we think there's a large enough group to feed. But we certainly can make changes in that our drivers won't be driving as we start school. So we'll have drivers available that could probably do more, more feeding sites if we need to do that.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Right, additional discussion? All right, well, I believe this question will be for Ms. Rousseau, two operational questions, just for, for clarity or for the, the public, I think, would be beneficial. In terms of a teacher requiring a number of sick days, and there is a quarantining period, if you believe that you may be potentially positive, or you have a fever or, or temperature, what kinds of provisions have we, do we have available for those staff members that will have to be under quarantine? How much of their sick leave could be potentially available, and what, what kinds of provisions are available for them?
We can certainly get you that information, Mr. Brown. That's something that I don't know if Ms. Haas is on the panel or not. But anyway, that's something we can get for you. There are some requirements that we provide leave time for folks that are affected by COVID, and we certainly will be doing that. And I don't believe that that requires them to use their leave time if they have to quarantine. But we can certainly get you the details on that. And I do think that'll be of interest to our staff, and I think that Stephanie and her team have put some information out to staff on that as well already, but we'll certainly make that clear for both.
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Rousseau, if it could also apply to teachers if they get sick, even teaching virtually, that has been a concern.
Right, understand, and we'll, we'll make that clear for everyone. We'll, we'll get that information out.
Great, and the, the second question is just around our, is, is around our support staff positions, like security, bus drivers, and, and other support staff that are very much instructional-facing types of, of positions. What types of issues in terms of job security does this, this action to have for them?
Well, at this moment, Mr. Brown, we don't really know what the state's plan is with regard to funding. Of course, the state in the spring continued funding, and we were able to continue employment for folks and continue to pay them. That's our hope for the fall, but at this moment, it's just our hope. The state, as you know, the General Assembly is coming back into session on the 18th of this month. It's my understanding from Mr. Finneran that the session is expected to be 10 to 14 days in length. So until they adjourn, I'm not sure we'll know exactly what the budget update will be. It's our intent to continue to have our folks serve in some capacity. If, for example, we don't need them to drive, but we've just talked about the possibility of needing some mobile feeding sites. So we'll need some drivers to drive. We will not need our entire fleet of drivers to drive, however. We probably won't need our entire staff of custodians. We probably won't need our entire staff of child nutrition folks. But remember that I mentioned that the city will need some additional support to help us with our childcare solution. Know that all of our folks are used to working with kids, and they also have all had background checks. So we believe that there's some opportunity to reassign staff. So we're going to see if we can be creative about that, and if staff's willing to help us in other areas, we want to give them that opportunity. So we're going to be working with folks to do that. We mentioned the staff intent forms, those are due back the end of this week. That will give us the information we'll need as to whether folks are able to come back in person, whether they themselves have some health risks, or whether a family member has a health risk. And that will play into our ability of how we might assign folks. So we're really kind of waiting to see that before we get into full swing on how the reassignments might look.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to piggyback off that first question that I'm hearing from my human resources director, and just reiterating from our workshop that if a person contracts COVID while on, and it's notified, they would have two weeks of paid leave provided. And that's, that's, that's for any employee. That applies to virtual or in-person, once we, once we start up school operations.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Yes, Ms. Amen?
Um, just a, I guess, a question or a comment, or, Dr. Parker, maybe you can help. I've heard, you know, we're looking at being virtual, but we're also looking at Parks and Rec, or maybe other organizations using some of our facilities for childcare. And it comes, it, it can come across as sort of ironic, we trust them to care for the children in our facilities, but we're not looking to go in person, maybe even for some special educational needs. Can you explain some of the logistical differences and why one would be feasible, the other may not be?
Well, currently, Parks and Rec, and thank you for that question, Mrs. Amen. Currently, Parks and Rec is using an eight-to-one ratio for, for, for students to, to staff members. And with that being said, they could not expand their mission of providing more childcare with that many kids spread out, with being assigned eight-to-one. So they're really using social distancing to the utmost to make sure that they're adhering to, to, to social distancing guidelines with those students that, that those, with those children, that they're, they're, they're provided under their care. With that being said, using our facilities would not be a problem, because we can, we can provide the cleaning, but expanding their mission to accommodate more parents and more families, what required, they, they do not have the staff to do that. And just transitioning that to an instructional conversation on our part, there's, we would not be able to bring back classes eight-to-one with an eight-to-one restriction or under those type of circumstances that they're using. They are using even a more restrictive setting than we would, than we would be able to accommodate, for, to accommodate our students.
I think another point, perhaps, that might help, Ms. Amen, is the fact that such a really relatively low percentage of our staff and parents have indicated a need for childcare. So it wouldn't be like we were trying to bring back all of our children for learning. It's a relatively small percentage of both parents and staff that to date have indicated a need for childcare. It's a relatively small percentage of both uh parents and staff that to date have indicated a need for childcare.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Uh Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Hunter.
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best.
Terry Best, four.
Mrs. Amon.
Rebecca Amon, um strictly because I think we may be missing an opportunity to get some in-person instruction. Um I'm voting this way, but I will absolutely support Dr. Parker and the rest of the staff to towards success uh in whichever option we implement and adopt, but uh Mrs. Amon against.
Mr. Brown.
Douglas Brown, four.
Mr. Ely.
John Ely, four.
Mr. Harris.
Marvin Harris, four.
Motion carries six, one.
All right. So that does now uh move us to the adoption of our uh norms and protocols that we went over today at the planning retreat. Can I now have a motion to adopt our norms and protocols?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the presented norms and protocols as discussed today.
And I second that motion.
Thank you. Seconded by Dr. Best. All right. Any uh any discussion on the motion? All right, they're they're being done. Uh Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hunter.
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law.
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Best.
Terry Best, four.
Mrs. Amon.
Rebecca Amon, four.
Mr. Brown.
Douglas Brown, four.
Mr. Ely.
John Ely, four.
Mr. Harris.
Marvin Harris, four.
Motion carries seven, zero.
All right, thank you. Now that that does conclude our uh section two, which are action items on the agenda, and we're now gonna move to our adjournment section. I believe this now is a time for comments by the superintendent. Uh Dr. Parker, do you have any uh comments to share with us today?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, one, thank the board again for uh for another very complex and very um difficult decision, but uh obviously um uh as always, um we're we're moving forward with the best interest of students in mind, and I'd like to also thank all of our board members and and Mrs. Amon. I can honestly say has has been in constant contact with me and constant questions. She has definitely um want weighed this decision very heavily, so I thank you, and I know that you mean sincerely that you will support uh our 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 division moving forward with your decision. Um this is difficult times, and I think we have parents and and staff members on uh on both sides of defense, and I can tell you, now that a decision is made, it's time to lead. Um and I'm not just talking about from my chair, I'm talking about from the chair of our principals, the chairs of our instructional leaders, chairs of our teachers, who will lead the instruction on the day-to-base, day-to-day basis in our classes. Uh many of you did exceptional work during the spring, and I have nothing but complete confidence that no matter what the circumstances may be, we will expect excellence from our students, and and we will also provide excellence on daily day-to-day basis. We can't provide perfection, as I mentioned earlier, but we can strive for excellence. And if you uh I'd like to contend to continue to hear from our teachers and staff as we work through some of these dilemmas. We have broken up into smaller committees focused on things like social emotional learning, virtual learning, um childcare, uh safety. We'll continue to work on what the um dilemmas will be moving forward in order to start effectively, make sure that we are ser- uh meeting the needs of our students, and then also starting to find ways that we would transition eventually when it's safe into a hybrid or a full-time model for instruction. I agree, our our ultimate goal and success for us is to eventually get to face-to-face instruction. But between that time, we are not losing ground with the with the instruction that we're providing. And if it wasn't said tonight, our first priority, after we feel providing a very good summer program and summer initiative, is to make sure that we close the gap in learning from the spring that the instruction that was lost to making sure that our students have a wealth, a a a great initial start uh from a curriculum standpoint um and closing the gaps in their learning. So that will be a heightened focus on our on our staff, and we will definitely want to uh meet our meet our teachers where they are. Parents, you should expect that um that list of uh materials to come out soon. Uh we'll have that information to you, and let's get started. Let's have a great school year. I want folks to get excited about where we are, understanding the circumstances, but also meeting the challenges. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Uh why don't we start with uh Mr. Moody? Uh any comments to to bring us today?
Well, first, I would like to uh um hope to wish everyone on to America, a city. I also like to thank Dr. Popcorn sharing that all things remain safe. Great. I would ask that everyone, please follow me on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moody. All right.
Be safe and have a great year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moody. Uh one of the challenges of of virtual is uh is occasionally we have, we do have uh uh difficult connections, but I think we were able to get most of that in. Mr. Moody, uh thank you for representing uh the students uh very well uh to with us tonight. Okay, uh Mr. Hunter.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um I have just a couple of words to say. Please, please, please wear a mask. We must get our kids back in school. I know this is um the way we had to start the first nine weeks off, but we must wear a mask, wear a mask for you, wear a mask for your neighbor, wear a mask for the person next door. We must wear a mask in order for us to defeat this virus. And that said, please wear masks, and children, if you're watching, continue to read those books, magazines, coloring books, storybooks, fairy tales, just read. So two things, and you can read with the mask on. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say. Wear a mask.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hunter. Uh Dr. Best.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Very brief tonight. Um just again, just calling on the community. We're gonna need your support in in every conceivable manner. Again, um I strongly encourage you to get with your neighbor, get with your family member, get with your nieces, get with your nephews, get with your social civic organizations, and see what it is that you can do that make sure that our students have what they need to be um successful. The schools can't do everything, so we we need your support. Um and we know that you're able and that you're willing, so I'm gonna go ahead and thank you in advance. And then finally, for our teenagers out there, take that cell phone and use that and connect with your friends like you're pretty much on it all day. I live with two teenagers, and and take advantage of that technology, and if you need help uh something explained a particular way, or if you missed something, um or if you see your friend is friend is lagging behind a little bit, and and you can offer them some assistance, take that cell phone and help them out, and parents, you encourage them uh to do that as well. So for everyone out there, please know that I can say that for myself, and probably for every board member. We didn't take this decision that we had to make um lightly. It's it's caused a lot of lost sleep, um a lot of um phone calls, a lot of emails, uh social um a lot of, you know, social media quite a bit to kind of get a pulse of what people are saying. So we didn't take it lightly, and our number one goal is to educate, of course, your children and to keep everyone safe. So take care of yourself and and just stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Ms. Amon.
Thank you, Chairman Brown, and I just want to thank everybody um and Dr. Parker and your team. I just want to thank you. You guys have done an incredible job to to turn an organization like the Newport News School System a hundred and eighty degrees into virtual is an incredible effort, and I think if any division is going to succeed at this, I think you you and your team are greatly positioned to do so. Um so I just wanted to thank you for that and look forward to um as we move down the path for option one to a successful first quarter.
All right, thank you, Ms. Amon. All right, uh Mr. Harris.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, in the words of my old football coach, Mr. Oliver Perry White in High School, we was fourth and one. A team had beaten us for four years straight. I was a senior. It was my last football game, and I said to myself, will I end my career with a loss? And he told us, he said, trust in the process. Trust that you have practiced as hard as you can. Remember the heels that you ran. Remember the sweat and tears in the two-a-day practices that you put in in the hot Mississippi sun in the springtime. So it wasn't the fact that they was better than we were. It was the fact that we did not believe in ourself. And in order for institutions or organizations or communities to be great, you must, in time of hardship, believe in yourself. Believe in the process, and that is from teachers to principals to school board members to family members. Uh we must believe in the process. And I dare say, every time we are tempted to react in the same way prior to COVID, ask yourself, you know, do you want to be a prisoner of the past or a pioneer of the future? The bottom line is, we must move forward in a uncertain time, uncertain future, but we must move forward. So I just ask that we all believe in ourself, uh believe in the community, and this will test the theory of it takes a community to raise, a village to raise a child, and I'm sure education was part of that. It's gonna test that theory. Is it true or is it not true? So I think we're gonna put our best foot forward. I know the school divisions put their best foot forward. Every school board member uh has wrestled with this. I even uh at one time was, you know, ready to go back to school. And and everybody has their own individual preference, but I think the school division is ready. I know they're ready. We just ask their parents, rest of the community, uh uh believe in 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 your system that you have put forward, and just help us uh make this a successful year or successful couple of months, couple of weeks for uh the children which we are dedicated to educate. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I close, and you're back my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right. Uh Vice Chair Soslaw.
Okay, well, although today's vote was for moving forward in what we're going to do for the the upcoming school year, we'd be very remiss to not thank employees, um Dr. Parker and the whole team who have made it possible to get to this point, to have some data uh that will allow us to know how we can move forward um responsibly. And um many, many thanks for summer programs um continuing to occur and a a shift there in meeting needs. Um I guess uh sometimes I always feel it goes without saying that in-person education is the best, but in these times, we need to make sure that everyone is on the same page and that we all do understand that education uh in person is in fact the best. Um however, I think in this case, uh there's a preamble to that. It needs for us to be safe to be able to do in-person education. We want all of our teachers returning because they're great, uh and we want all of our students returning because they're awesome. And we need to make sure that we are ready to roll when the time comes for us to do in-person uh education. So I am eager to see what the district does with this decision. Uh we have been um, we've been versed on uh the preliminary uh challenges that we're gonna face, and I love the fact, too, that we are listening to our constituents so that we're not uh creating, um I guess you'd say, uh rules and uh procedures in a vacuum. So, Dr. Parker, thank you for that. Thank you uh for asking for that input. I know some people, we don't want to have um survey fatigue, and I know some people were like, why are we having another survey? But I hope that the survey actually pointed to the fact that Newport News Public Schools has their pulse, has their finger on the pulse of the things that we need to be concerned about, and we would like your input on that. Um so I'm looking forward to the first nine weeks. Uh I wish our team the best, and the board is here to support and help in any way that we possibly can.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right, Mr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Brown for calling on me. Um I would like to thank the um first thank the community for just coming together during these unprecedented time, unprecedented times. Um and just thank the board that we made the right decision. I know it's gonna, I know it's gonna be hard for families. I know it's gonna be hard for teachers. I know it's gonna be hard for children. I was that child who needed to be in school. I went, I would been struggling trying to do virtual learning. I know it's gonna be hard, but I know that we will get through this. Um and I just wanna thank the community once again for coming together um and for the board making this right decision. I know it was very hard on a lot of teachers and staff, and there are a lot of them have underlying conditions, and they were they were nervous. They were terrified, you know, scared to come back to school because they were scared to get this daily disease that's going around. And these numbers are steady increasing. I was just looking on the internet before the meeting how in Georgia, they had to close down a school because so many students and teachers got affected and kids got affected from COVID. So I just want to continue that our school division move in the right direction, and then when it when it is safe that we do return back to school, because like everyone said, that is our ultimate goal to be in school. And that's all. I just want to say thank you to the community, and like Dr. Best said, and Mr. Harris. It's going to take the community to pull through, but like Gary Hunter said, it's great things happening in Newport News, and we will get through. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, uh we are just about ready to get schools started. Hopefully you all are excited out there. I am still very much uh excited, and I believe that the entire board is really excited and happy about uh the start to school, that uh there is going to uh be a lot of consistent learning taking place. We've learned a lot uh from our uh uh online uh assessments in the in the springtime, and we've taken a lot of lessons, or I think from the summer, and this fall is just gonna be uh us, you know, moving, I think, ahead on on a lot of the cylinders, uh moving things ahead smoothly. I want to, I want to thank Dr. Parker and his team for all of the work that went into two surveys. Uh two surveys was a was a hefty uh lift, and I know it was a lot of phone calls and emails and website maintenance that was done, uh and and a lot of compilation and all the 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 data uh management that went into pulling together the results. I know it was a significant amount of work. I believe that the work was was well worth it uh in terms of being able to have a good context for our decision. We we've gone, we went for roughly in the first survey, it was uh roughly sixty-something percent in favor of a hybrid learning approach. And then we went in the second survey to a sixty-something in favor of the hundred percent virtual approach, which I think uh really gave us a lot of context for the decision that the board had to make. And so I wanna, I want to thank everyone for all the all the staff, for all the work that went in into that effort. Uh we now, and so with that, now we're we're ready to start the school year. We've got our challenges ahead of us. Uh we've, but we've, we know that uh we've been through uh this situation, and 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 we've uh, you know, come through uh well before our graduation went well in the previous year, and just like uh with that uh situation, we have now gone out and listened to our community, and we've crafted and come up with a solution for opening our schools that reflects uh the spirit of our community and the community's wishes. So now it's, as as was mentioned, it's going to take the community really coming together to support the initiative that they put forward. Uh we are looking for your continued support. Uh your cooperation is gonna be really necessary for us to be successful. Parents, please uh uh get online. There's going to be opportunities for you to uh to get familiar with the Canvas learning system. Uh if you haven't uh gotten yourself into ParentView, please do that, you know, uh now again, because now is the time to to get that uh uh get infrastructure in place, make your plans. Uh we know that there is childcare is is an issue out there, and we're working very diligently uh uh towards the twenty percent of you that identified yourselves during the survey uh who are gonna need childcare. We know that you're you're out there, and we're we're being nimble and uh and and trying to make accommodations for as many of you as we can. Churches, as was mentioned, and and community centers and and all the civic organizations, now really is a time uh in terms of your mission uh and and what you do in our community. Uh so and now is the time, we're calling, we're calling in the markets, we're calling in the favors. It's it's now time to open your doors. We are going to need a partnership with you all to help with the childcare uh situation that's gonna be facing many families, especially our essential workers. And uh and we know that we will get through this together, but uh together we will uh we will weather this and uh and we'll come out, come through stronger and really become, I think, a a great blended learning community at the end of this. So so I think that uh some of our best times are ahead. So, so I think that some of our best times are ahead of us, and I'm looking forward to doing it together with you. With that being said, if there's no further business, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned, and thank you all for attending the special meeting of the Newport News School Board.